About some things in terms of IMF, the surplus property. What do we do with the surplus property?
Yeah, surplus property has to be prepared by the district. It's no unusual typically. It's a great deal of furniture and technological equipment. A lot of times the furniture goes over to the storage facility. If anybody else wants, you know, we've tried to sell it before. We've sold to other districts, used desk, sold desk. Uh, some of the computer equipment just gets stored away. So a lot of it's just thrown away. But anything that's done with title funds has to be retained because it's marked as being purchased with title funds and cannot be disposed of in that manner. We've donated it before to local churches or different events, uh, different people, even school board members have represented groups that thought they could use some of that stuff, even in the shape of us. So we've given it to them in the past. I mean, there's just a lot of things that we do with it when we're done with it.
So there's no way it could have been very much money out of it?
Most of the time when we put it on a disposal sheet, it's not, not worth very much money.
You could scrap it?
We do scrap it and that money goes into the maintenance crew. They haul stuff off over there. They, we've tried the last few years have a sale in spring where they get all of it out and put it out for just anybody to, you know, try to sell it. And maybe something to put back into their maintenance fund if they use on that. Any of what's left, they use generally a lot of times specifically pick something, we can get something for it in the scrapyard to haul it off.
Any other question on the exam?
On the, uh, IMF, forty-five hundred payment?
Yes, sir.
I noticed that in those payments, there's one, uh, subject is retiring. And he's slated to get the money for the nineteen or twenty year.
See that? That was the last minute retirement on a health issue, I believe.
Yep.
That's what Joan has, Joan had said, that's a last minute retirement on a health issue?
Okay, that, I saw that. I read his retirement or his resignation. Is he entitled to that money?
I don't think so, because that's for his job.
That-
He'll get this year's money, he won't see that he got the next year.
He, he can't be, he won't be an employee next year, he can't be paid.
Okay, so-
He, he would be on the books as qualifying like anybody else qualifies for policy four five hundred. So we put him down, he qualified it, but he, he turned it into a resignation letter. So he won't be an employee next year. So by the time that, that will be paid out till next spring, he won't, he won't be here to get that.
I have just a question. Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion to approve consent agenda items.
I'm sorry, I have one more question.
Okay.
The budget amendments and transfers, transferred to capital. Is that money that's being transferred to capital? Is that money that can be retained in the general?
It's all been retained. Nothing is being transferred. As you wrote, all transfers to hold on to that money. So you had balances. The only thing that's being transferred is three hundred and thirty-eight thousand. It's Perkins federal money. And that's used by the unit tech. That's not, that's a federal grant money. That's not North County's. That goes for the enhanced grant, the prize equipment, those things at the unit tech. That transfer is made because it's, it's made through the federal. All local monies and everything like that, we took those transfers out. They are not in there. That was on the sheet that I gave you that showed the declining enrollment. You'll notice that there are transfers listed every year, but on this year, there's nothing on those lines. We pulled those out to retain those imbalances.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, no other questions. I need a motion to approve consent agenda items.
So Casey, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on to communications, uh, the radio ads trip to the NBA national championships in twenty twenty. We all got the letter, very informative and very thorough. Good letter read today. Uh, is there any questions, uh, about this trip? I want to talk about it. If not, I need a motion to approve. Need a second?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Moving on to reports, career letter.
The career letter was there for you. Career letter was funded this year and paid. Uh, career letter was a state program that was dropped. North County pays all of that. There's, there's no state payment for career letter anymore. It's cured one, two, and three, which is seven hundred and fifty, fifteen, hundred and twenty-five hundred dollars. They have to do hours of service to, to bulk of that, I think over three thousand of that is in tutoring or student contact hours by the teachers. Uh, it's a tremendous benefit to the students and that is, that is a portion of what was budgeted and has been paid.
Uh, capital projects.
When your capital projects report, what you have listed, capital projects are just the things that had been previously approved for this summer. That is not your entire capital projects list. The whole capital list is, is, is a book about what they'd like to see taken care of over the next, you know, five years. But what we did do is in looking at capital projects, met with Kenny Henry after finding out about the significant drop in enrollment and what we were going to be at. We amended that. We currently budget four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars for summer projects. We have rolled that back to about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for summer projects. And the first two beds, those that you're going to look at tonight have already come in well underestimations. One of them probably in excess of ten thousand dollars less than we had planned. So there's going to be significant savings there. There was funding available in capital projects that would take them through the year to next year's for transfers. And so we did not need to make those. We're operating out of what you currently have in balances in Fund Four.
Another comment, move on to action items. Last, last month, we talked about the new club, the archery club. Uh, need to, to consider putting that club into place. Is there any comments? Everybody on top of that?
Mr. Bullock, you had asked about competition and the only two schools that I can find that do competition are Hillsborough and the sort of, they currently have archery clubs and they do competitive events. I don't know what the events are, but you told us to ask about that and that's the only two schools, but I'm not saying that the only two schools have archery clubs. I'm saying they're the only two schools that I know of that have competitive shooting that we can participate in. It's the only two I could find.
So- In this, in this area. Just, who's coming here? Are they intending to just be the club and not have any competition?
I, I think the first year they probably would just be an archery club before they're trying to compete. I don't know that. I wouldn't have a club sponsor, club sponsor here?
No.
He's not here? Anyway, my, my understanding was this first year they're going to be a club and then the second year they could decide if they wanted to compete with it. Casey?
All in favor?
Aye.
To approve. We're going down to, uh, consider it down to July. We're having a July board workshop. Any ideas on that? Anybody? Personally, I'm going to be gone the first eleven days of July. Been waiting on this wedding for thirty-nine years. Well, we can get together on the day.
The, uh, the resume end of date was about nineteenth at sixteen.
July nineteenth, sound alright.
It's on Friday.
We've gone down to D. Uh, I need a motion to approve the tuition reimbursement salary increases.
Excuse me?
That's one of our workstations. B and C is the last group. Thing was me because I always fall in the first class group.
So we'll move to, to next day.
I make a motion to change the August program to Thursday, August twenty second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And now approve the tuition reimbursement salary increases. Comments? I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve tuition reimbursement. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the non-resident tuition rate for summer rice student economy. Casey? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, approve the budget for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year.
So on salary adjustments, what we have there is when I got, I got notice in mid-April that the department was only going to let us run the first preceding year's ADA. That ADA number showed us having an enrollment drop on ADA of one hundred and twenty-seven point four students in one year. That's going to cost the district next year, or is paid in arrears. So next year, the district will lose one point one million dollars. And so we had projected on the second year proceeding, which is what you're allowed to calculate under the law on a declining enrollment, which we have had for the last eight or nine years. Over the last eight or nine years, including this last drop, we've dropped two hundred and fifty-two students. In that same time period, we have continued to pay the insurance. We have contributed to salary schedules where we could when the Arizona steps. But teacher salaries during that period of time increased forty-two hundred and fifty dollars. I've done what I could. Your assessed valuation is up to a hundred and seventy-four million. Uh, the comparative analysis always is what Farnum does. Farnum's assessed valuation is three hundred and sixty-seven million dollars. It's over double. That, that can't be compared to that. We have increased taxes in the district. And one of the things in this, there's no, no way, she's correct. I wish that we did meet. She has the figures and I get that. The only thing difference was the, the bond issue payment was on what we had on pre-bonding was seven million dollars is the difference on the seven and a half million dollar bond issue that we ran five years ago. And that was the other money that's in debt service and that, that money can't be transferred out to operating costs. Okay? We also during that same time period have given between three and four thousand dollars in stipends, which we always paid through salary schedule and the board was gracious enough to do that, which has increased. All certified staff members retired in a minimum of about three hundred and fifteen dollars a month for the rest of their life. So on, on a declining enrollment, flat assessed valuation and still trying to do what we could, I have tried to do what I felt like I could for the staff. I, 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 and I have been above board and open with things. But when you lose a hundred and twenty-seven students on what the state will let you calculate in one year, that's tough to overcome. Because we don't have something to offset that. Now, we've got a little good news, not good news for business people like Mr. Hubbard, but we've got a little good news today that I didn't have, I ran a bunch of projections. And that is the assessor has raised assessments, some of them fifteen, twenty percent, some of them multiple times. I didn't calculate that in because I didn't have that information. Uh, the other thing we have is preschool enrollment and other things that have shown signs of recuperating, coming back. I don't think it'll come back all one hundred and twenty-seven, but it's rebounding. We have a very fluctuating population here and that's, that's difficult to manage. And yes, we've known that we had a decline in population for eight years, but instead of making cuts or doing and, and stopping off all those things, I continued to try everything I could and pay, like even this year, this board agreed, it's still fully paid the insurance. Which is a two hundred and ninety-three dollar and forty cent benefit to the employees tax-free because it's pre-taxable. And it crowds towards the retirement and you still had a full PPO plan. So, and then again, before we do the enrollment drop, we've done all those things. My recommendation was based on leaving the district in what I felt like was a comfortable situation with balances, which are six point nine four percent is the projection, seven percent of balances. That does not include debt service money. There's almost two and a half million dollars in your debt service fund. That's what I have used many times to offset these student drops as I've had call features and bond refundings. Well, the next call feature is March first of two thousand and twenty. I can't get there right now. You have the money to prepay and free up operating capital, but you can't do it to March without taking significant penalties. And that doesn't seem wise to me. So I made my recommendation based on, and I didn't want, this is my last year, I didn't want to do this. The board didn't lose a hundred and twenty, no, nobody, it's anybody's fault here. You know, now I get the news, moderate mushrooms leaving the district. And maybe that's going to close the shop. I mean, you hear these things, well, those are all part of your assessed valuation. There's no business growth coming to offset these things. We could weather twenty, twenty-five students, which it had been. One year it was only two, but a hundred and twenty-seven is very, very difficult, uh, to find a way to overcome. And the other thing I want to be clear about on school funding, and a lot of people don't understand this, is we have very good audits. We have an annual audit. And we have good audits. We're strong because there's a lot of money in accounts like debt service, because you have a tax levy that's funding that. And capital projects, because there's money there that was built up that didn't come out of the, the debt service fund. It did not transfer from there. And then you have like Fund Five Hundred and Food Services, those aren't monies that you legally can move. Tax rates put those there and the board has no discretion over those. So it's nothing the board bid, it's nothing we, we created, it's just is what is. Having said all that, I've been talking with Mr. Hubbard, obviously. You know, I haven't, I haven't said I've slept well for the last two weeks over all this because this is my district. And you can say what you want to and think what you want to. I've tried to do right by it. Uh, I've done the best I could with what I had to work with financially. And that being said, I'm going to say publicly, there is money to pay steps and increments if that's what they choose to do. And you have the force and our raise. And I agree to that force and our raise, which is minimal, because at the time, I was running on a second year proceeding estimation. Which told me I was probably going to be alright and give it offset that loss. But then the Department of Governmentary Education calculated what they would allow me to run. The number was twenty-nine seventy-three. We had been at thirty-one hundred. So I have to run the number that's approved by Desi. And so when I did that and saw that they're going to take that loss, I thought it's, it's not fair to give anything to one group regardless of how minimal and not give anything to the other groups. Because my intent, my recommendation, which I have in writing, was to give everybody steps and increments and the force and the custodial. So everybody got about the same thing as I was going out, they all got the same increments. Now, what I'm saying to the board and to you is that there's money to pay those things, as long as the understanding of the board is that by doing that, they're going to have to operate somewhere around five point one to five point, five, five point one to five point four five percent of balances per year. And I've told you in March, there's a chance to fix that. There are other things that can be adjusted. Uh, there are insurance adjustments that can make things. Uh, we were qualifying in the future for a no tax increase bond issue, which will again stop the capital transfers and allow fund balances to be built. It's recoverable. It's recoverable quickly in a year, but we can't get to March now. So I made the recommendation based upon trying to treat everybody equally and placing the district in a position where they were, they were fine and comfortable. We've been operating about those balances or not much more for years. The budget that I have, and she said, where are we right now? It estimated us to finish up at six point eight nine. My budget for next year is estimated for end up at six point nine four. The difference being, we're taking some of the money we had missing, we're offsetting that one point one million dollar loss in enrollment, hoping that those kids come back and that other businesses come to the district. But nobody's in control of that. And I will say that historically, it's been an experience to work and do that because we have a prison and, and our, our student enrollment does this. You know, if you could talk to one of the councils or registrars, they're in and out of here all the time. And then the other thing is everybody says, you know, the numbers don't match up exactly on your enrollment. Well, no, the state has us at twenty-nine fifty-six. But one of the reasons that's not the same number is because you get more credit for special education students. There's a multiplier there of twenty-five percent. You get additional credit for IEP students, individualized educational plan. There's a multiplier there. So instead of counting just as one, that count is one point one or one point oh two. And so we have a lot of IEP students. And so those numbers add up. That's how we got to the twenty-nine seventy-three, your first year proceeding ADA, plus your summer school. Our summer school is way down. We only qualified at fifty-two students through summer school. You're going to say there's three or four hundred kids in summer school. That's not an ADA. The state bases one ADA on one thousand forty-four hours of attendance. They've all heard this. That's a year. So you take their summer school hours, you divide it into a thousand forty-four, and you find out how much that student is, like a point whatever. So you gotta have a bunch of kids that attend the whole summer school to get a one. And we've been getting up to about sixty, seventy. This year, we're at about fifty to fifty-two. So that loss figured in. If you, some of you have been around long enough to know that there was a time when they paid students to go to summer school. Teachers remember that? Gave a hundred bucks to go to summer school. Because if you can get them here and make them an ADA, if four or five of them you have to spend a hundred dollars on, but they get you one ADA, one ADA pays six thousand three hundred and fifty dollars from the state. That covers the three thousand two hundred dollar teacher salary, the money you gave to the students, you had to get it, and it makes the district about a thousand bucks. So there was a method to that madness, but it also was frowned upon in the State Department that you're spending tax dollars to make kids go to school. That's all side note. I just want you to know some of the background and history. The biggest thing we have here is you have a, a bad declining enrollment year. We were riding along there pretty good. The one twenty-seven drop, it happened to fall this year. Nothing anybody up here did, nothing anybody out there did. And I do take care of the teachers. That's why I recommended the insurance. That was the maximum benefit we could provide up to this point. And I'm telling you publicly, in front of this board, that if they choose to do steps and increments, there is money there to do it. We're not in a crisis. The state's not going to come in and take us over. We're in tough financial times until your assessed valuation goes up or your enrollment rebounds. It's difficult. There were things that happened in the future that Mr. Hubbard could speak to. The reason this district doesn't have balances doesn't have anything to do with me. It doesn't have anything to do with the person before me. And I don't even know if it has a lot to do with the person that was before him. But that's why other districts around have balances because of our opportunities given that North County didn't take. Doesn't have anything to do with anybody in this room. Some of them were still in grade school then.
I have a question though.
Yes.
Looking at all the financials, if our, and it is, our revenue is flat, why did we have steadily increasing expenditures? That's what we want to know. Why did we continue to spend?
Because over the years, and I have the history here of the salaries, what we're doing, we're going from thirty-one fifty to thirty, I've continued to pay everybody.
But that's not ten percent, Dr. Parker.
The only way, seventy, seventy-five to seventy-seven percent of your budget is salaries and benefits for the teachers. Of that thirty, approximately thirty million dollar budget, seventy-five to seventy-seven percent of that is salaries and benefits for teachers. Okay? Well, what we have done along that time is when I've continued to try to find ways to make sure you got your step or your increases. And, and over that same period when we're losing enrollment and assessed valuation is not growing, salaries increased over four thousand dollars. And I paid stipends. Every time we got any money over in bals, I gave it out in stipends. I told you, you get the money, you got the money. The other thing that you have to take into regard in there is that nobody lost their job. We, we didn't riff anybody. We didn't go around firing people.
No, but we built a building.
But the building was built with money that had been up prior to that, not for that. I did not use bond money on that. We had made capital transfers and had that back when, back when the times were good and I had money. Look, we transferred almost a million dollars a year. And so we had money built up to cover that. We didn't have to go dip and cough because it was already there.
But we didn't have to transfer that money.
I'm talking now. The same thing I'm saying to you is this.
You don't get to say, hey, I'm not talk, I'm talking right now. That's rude.
I apologize to you. Listen to me. Let me finish.
We have questions and we deserve answers.
I spent two hours with you the other day trying to answer every question.
I understand.
I have a question, sir. You say you're going to pay the teachers their, their, their steps, correct? I'm sorry, everybody in here, some of you know me, some of you don't. My name is Mike Pye. My wife's a teacher. Okay? Now, this affects everybody in this room, correct?
Yes.
You have a paycheck, correct? As a superintendent, you get paid a certain amount of money. Now, let me ask you a question, sir. You show up to work and you're guaranteed, hey, we're going to hire you. And this involves everybody at Unitech. And understand that this is my words, not my wife's. We're going to pay you forty-five thousand a year. However, the office screwed up. You know what? We're only going to pay you step five thirty-eight thousand a year. From my understanding, Ms. Katie Bachman went before the school board last year and requested that these teachers be paid what they were promised based on their experience and the pay scale. Now, my personal experience is my wife is at a pay scale of five. She is supposed to be at a pay scale of fifteen. Now, everybody in here, if you go into your job and your boss tells you, I'm sorry, I'm going to pay you eight thousand dollars or less a year than what I promised you. Are you going to stay at that job? But then she goes in front of the school board and they say, oh, I'm sorry, that's too expensive. We're going to raise you two steps a year until we get you to where you're going to be. Well, how are you ever going to be paid what you have been promised? Paid, I'm not talking raises. I'm not talking extra money. I'm talking what you are promised, what you were told you are going to get paid this. You got your paycheck this year, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay? So now, everybody in here, from my understanding, all the teachers at Unitech are in the same boat, some even worse. So you're going to shoot down a, a, a two-step, or, or say two steps a year, and it's too expensive. My wife is ten steps from where she was promised to be paid. So you just said on this stage, we're going to pay them according to their steps, correct?
No, I said we would give them their step and their increment.
Oh, their step and their increment. I'm not talking about the normal pay raises. You're talking about a raise, sir. I'm talking about what these teachers have been promised to be paid, what they are worth. Are you not worth what you're promised to be paid? Now, if I come up, if I come to you, say I am in the office and I take Mr. Foreman, I'm sorry, this year. You know what? I'm sorry, sir. You know what? Let me ask you a question. I know it's public knowledge, but I don't have the information with me. What do you pay a year?
Hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
Hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars? Oh, my God! You know what? Why is a superintendent getting a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars a year? You know what? Next year, if you were here, let's pay you a hundred. You know what? Let's take that back. Let's pay you fifty. So you're promised a hundred and seventy-eight thousand a year, but yet the office screws up and only pays you one fifty. Are you going to be in that office raising hell? Do you want your paycheck, sir? Now, Mr. Hubbard here knows me, Jeebo knows me. I'm a wounded combat vet and I was a police officer for many years. This sickens me. You are messing, it's not right. So, so is this board going to pay the teachers what they are supposed to be paid or not? If, if you were ten steps from what you were supposed to be paid, sir, wouldn't you want your ten steps? That's all I'm saying.
Who promised? Change your comments. Let's move on.
It's what she was, it wasn't promised, it was what she earned based on her experience and everything else. This is the whole Unitech, the, the whole Unitech teachers themselves, every one of them are in the same boat. This isn't just me personally. This is the entire Unitech teacher.
Can I say something, please?
Yes, ma'am.
I've been in the school district for a long time. I don't know all this. All I know is that it's been the greatest school to me, okay? As you say, we've lowered it. And the only way we can bring more in here is the teachers. We need, we used to have good teachers. We're, I've been here for thirty years, guys, and I have seen this school fall down. Because we've had good teachers. We used to be farming in Central. Where are we now? This is what I know and what I'm saying. We need what we have, good teachers. And, you know, this is what we're going to bring our school back. This is what's going to bring our town back. This is all I know. Is what we need and what is. Okay, and like I said, I've been here for thirty years and I, I've seen what's been and I see what's now. And it's been, like you guys said, downhill. You know, we've always been up there. We're not ending there. We need our teachers and that's what's going to bring everything back.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Um, I've got a few things that I'd like to go over real quick. Like Dr. Foreman said, if it's put us down to about five point one to five point five, we do have close to a million dollars that we can get back in our coffers in July. We got another annuity that will come due later in the year. It's, it's not a lot of money compared to our budget right now. March first, we've got some, uh, call on some bonds. That's a one, that's a big payment that we won't be making to a bond payment starting in March. So there's a, a little here and a little there that we can recoup from this. It's not going to fix everything. It's going to take a little time. Personally, I don't have the rest of the board. Personally, I don't know how the rest of the board feels. We'll vote on it now, but I personally feel like we should give the steps. We should give the, the janitorial, janitor custodial raises. Now, that's, that's not a term to fix. Give us some time. There's, there's money available in the future, and it's going to take some help from some of you teachers. It's, we're all in this together. It's going to take a team effort. You got my word that we will work on this, and Dr. Levy's here, I believe, and he'll have to get right on board with us, so I'm sure he's ready to do that. So I need a motion.
Hey, I hear the janitorial and stuff. I don't hear anything about bus drivers. I've been here fourteen years, not bothered. I've, I've not even had a dollar raised yet. After four, after fourteen years, thirteen, something like that. I hear janitorial and all this stuff, but I don't hear nothing about bus drivers. Why is that? You've got to have a bus driver to get this to work.
Top heavy. A ten-year bus driver gets the same as a new bus driver.
Yeah, I've been here, been thirteen years, and you can have somebody come in tomorrow and get paid the same exact amount of money. That's not fair to have a bus driver.
We, we do the same custodial raise. We'll do the same custodial raise if we vote that way all the way across the board. Do that, have something. Like I said, stick with us, and we're going to work on this. You'll get the step plus the raises, if we vote to do that. That's just my opinion. So I guess the motion would be something like a motion to approve the salary steps for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year, including the four cents custodial raises, all the way across the board, including the bus drivers also.
We'll do, it'll be four cents to the base of the classified schedule, which means everybody on that schedule will get that same raise plus the step.
But I'm going to, I'm going to tell you, next year, if we don't do something, and we're going to be doing something, we'll get in the same boat. It's going to be worse. We're, we're solid. We're good for a year, maybe two, but we've got to change the way we're going, right the direction we're going now. Hey, we got, we can't make students, so we're going to have to find other ways. And I think we're projecting possibly a raise in students. There's just a lot of little areas that I see that we can recoup some of this from, but we're going to have to, we'll be talking on our work session, there's other ideas that we have that I'm sure that we can make this even better next year. Yes?
Randy, I've got a question. My name is Jake Long. I appreciate the work that you and Geebo have done since coming on board, but I expect more of you folks. You are not a rubber stamp for the superintendent. You are the ones who oversee the district. He recommends what is to be done. I expect more, guys, and you owe it to this community and the students of the district, the teachers. So can we expect more from you? They deserve it. If you don't want to do it, then you need to resign today.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Ooh. Okay, moving down to age, award bids, to re-rub the six hundred wings in the high schools in Rio. All the tentative budget. Yeah, approve the tentative budget for the twenty-nine. You'll have to change, I guess, the...
Well, it gets right there, what you're approving, that's why it's in there, it says tentative. So what you'll do is you'll approve the current budget, the way it's proposed, and that's at the six point nine four. All the measures are showing back, make the adjustments for steps increments. That'll be taken out. I already explained to you how that works. That comes out on the expense side, goes in on, I mean, comes out on the revenue side, goes in on the expense side. It'll run new balances. You'll have a new balance sheet, and you'll get an amended budget. My recommendation is I would wait and do that sometime in about November, when you get your first live payment from the state. That's the first check that's on next year's actual money, if yours was paid in arrears. You can do it sooner if you want, because I already told you pretty much where you're going to be, but you, you can have your budget amended sometime later this fall. Dr. Levy can look at that and give you that by November, and then you'll have a hard figure of where you're going to be. And that hard figure will increase in January with this new assessment. Taxes go up, and then it'll, it'll, it'll grow from there. If I understand, you're approving a tentative budget based on the no transfers they do, the paying the steps, paying increments, which you just approved. You'll amend it to hard figures, which we already know is going to be five one to five four, and they'll do that for you this fall in November. Same budget, you'll just have a new, a new summary page and estimation sheet.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the tentative budget for twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty twenty.
I'll make that motion.
Dave's second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ooh. Now moving on to award bids to re-rub the six hundred wings in the high schools and re-rub the district stories. I have a question.
Yes.
We didn't, we didn't have anybody, we only had one, one person. Bachman's the only person who picked up a packet or the other. That's the reason we got one bid. Only one group bid. See, nobody else picked up a packet.
You have the, the best of the people already in the number, which you got.
That actually can't be in below where we had estimated, yes. That is included in the number that you have in your government projects, and it can't be in under budget. Or underestimation.
All right, I need a motion to approve the award bid. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, award bid to replace the rooftop units at the high school.
Those are, those are the antiquated units that are split, called split units in these service facilities, and are costing us more in repairs and acquires and pretenses than would be to replace the units. And the other factor is, the new stuff, the operating costs are so much lower than that, that older stuff. It pays for itself over time pretty quickly. But Mr. Hamrick, we have a gentleman named Michael Lermore, who works in maintenance. He's the HVAC person, has done pretty much everything he could to keep those going, but just one where they have to be replaced. Newness cheaper to operate, and it's, it's actually cheaper to replace than it is to keep fixing them.
Randy, a motion to approve the rooftop units at the high school.
Who has one? Which one, which one? You have, you have a bid from TRNL Contractors for thirty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. You have a bid from SSCI, sheet metal contractors out of Minnesota, and their bid was thirty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars. Yes, the, the same, the, the same brand and tonnage. It's just different, different labor cost, different installation cost. Kenny was, Kenny was disappointed. He was, there's a lot of work going on in the area, and some of the contractors we talked to said they just got more work than they can keep up with right now. And neighboring districts have got bond, bond issue things going on. That's all we got for bids. Actually, there's a good bid from what we estimated the cost at, if we're not the normal people we thought we'd get. Uh, SSCI is from Minnesota, Missouri. A sheet metal contractors, most of you know them. I've got family that works with them. Their bid is thirty-six thousand, nine hundred. The other was TRNL Contractors. They're out of St. Peters, Missouri, and their bid was thirty-three thousand, six sixty-five. I do not. Look, I'll be picking it up in the paper because we have to publish for bids. TRNL Contractors out of St. Peters, Missouri. Did it, did she say it? Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Dr. J, award bid to replace the outdoor curtains at the high school.
This, this was an option. In our inspection and tour with the Music Missouri United School Insurance Council, these are of the age, and they do not have the fiber, the things, so we're going to have a significant increase in our insurance premiums and cost coverages. The insurance company said that we'd go in as long as we could, that the curtains needed to be replaced with new fiber cotton materials. And these don't meet specs anymore, is what it comes down to. So this was really not, not optional for us, as far as the insurance providers concerned. The only bid we got on that, there aren't very many companies that do this. We did find one. It's AC Theatrical. They're out of Kansas City, Missouri. And it's the whole, it's the whole thing right there. It's twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and six dollars.
Is there an option to not have curtains? Is there an option to not have curtains?
I guess they have that option for them, and they don't have to prove it. If we kick, if we kick them, we've got to upgrade to the new, where we try to get the stuff and spray and then it's... You want to wait with it and see what the insurance adjustment calls in?
Yeah, we can take it and see what they...
What's the difference in cost and insurance?
We don't know. That's what we need to take.
That, I, depending on how much I do, if we, if they try the treatment, it's a one rate increase. If they do the replacement, it's, it's not a rate increase. And then the different variations on it, I, I don't know those numbers off the top of my head, but if, if they don't have them, we'll have to treat them. And that's not, that's not a rate expense. They're sprayed with the chemical, but it, that's, that's not what they asked us to do, to be compliant. Yeah, next, next fall, they'll come back for another. They'll do another, they usually do their visits in September, so they'll be back in September, and we have a list there, and we'll check off the things that, that they said we needed to do, that we got done. Some of it's like the painting stripes where you have bust loops or handicapped access, but we had it, but it was faded, so you repaint it and it puts you back in for months. This, this is one of those things, these curtains, these manufacturers are extremely expensive.
Okay, moving on to informational items. Assistant Superintendent's report. Associate Superintendent's report, Kay.
Just want to say thank you to everyone who worked very hard and very long hours to make the two thousand nineteen graduation ceremony such a success. We really appreciate that work, and since that's at the end of school, sometimes those people don't get that due credit. So thank you to everyone who helped us to do the graduation. Also, I would like to congratulate two teachers in our district who are now qualifying to be Regional Teachers of the Year. So Ms. Ashton Moss from the primary, and Shala Willier of the middle school have both qualified for the Regional Teacher of the Year for the South Louis area. They will go to a luncheon next Thursday, and we will find out who the winner is, so I will keep you all updated, but very impressive.
We don't have like separate things. I told you, there'll be several things on the table there for savings, and several things will come about next spring. We've even talked about some adjustments and things we do on vehicles, bus leases. Nothing's off the table. The situation is not necessarily overly created by anybody with a significant enrollment drop, but it is correctable. You know, I had intended for my last meeting to be different, and I still very much appreciative of the fact that, you know, I did work in this district thirteen years. And I'm not moving off and running off, so that's going to stop all those stories. I made this home. My dad's buried on that hill. And that doesn't amount to anything to anybody but me, but I'm just telling you that my heart and soul is in this district, and I have tried to be the very best by it I could. And then I know that everybody has, has opinions about how those things work and what they do, but you can only work with what you have to work with. And you all, nor I, are in control of some of the situations and change out here with businesses, with students coming and going, with transient population because they come and go from prison. It's a unique setting. But I left a memo for Dr. Levy, and this document will be heard later when I eventually, eventually leave and close out my office. And, and those things say that North County's got a lot of good people. We've got our, you know, we've got ours that are mad about everything. And then some of them are, are well justified sometimes and mad, but I don't think I've, and I apologize to you, Jennifer, I was, that was short with you, but I think I've been somebody who's approachable for thirteen years. I've always agreed to meet with any group that asks to come. I've tried to talk to everybody. You didn't always like my answer. You're not going to like anybody's answer every time, because at some point you say no. And you know, what I, what I do is not easy and it's not fun. But I will tell you this, I've been proud to be a Raider, always will be. My son bleeds blue and gold. And regardless of what you think and what the situation is, this district will come through it. When I came here, you had three point eight percent of balances. Salaries were frozen, and your facilities had needs. And that doesn't have anything to do with me, and what I did, it has to do with the fact that North County is resilient, and it will come through. And I don't, I don't sharp any of your expectations of the board, but you know, most places don't grant audits like this board does. One of the few places left, I know, still has public comments. But I'll, I'll close by saying this, don't compare yourself to other school districts when you're talking about a financial situation, because they're not you. Don't compare yourself to Farmington. They overdouble your assess valuation. You're growing by leaps and bounds. That's not you. Don't compare yourself to Central, who ran a phantom levying proxy pass when this district didn't pass it for four years, and they ran eighteen cents. It didn't exist a levy. They built up millions of dollars in the van. North County didn't do that. But don't sell your school short because it's, it's tight. And like Mr. Hubbard said, when he and I have talked, Randy's been very supportive, very open about things, but I've tried, you, you can weather this. You can survive it for a year or two. It'll improve. It'll improve quickly. And, and it can turn it around, but it, it takes the same commitment that you have coming here tonight to voice your concern and your frustrations. And you have the same frustrations when there are things that need to be done for this district. We need you to speak up. We need the same kind of attendance. We need the same kind of turnout when they run the bond issue. Keep in mind, your taxes have increased, and in five to seven years, and the next fund issue could extend that another eight. That's doing a service to this community. That's providing the things we're provided. And then not making those transfers leaves money in operating, which can be transferred to fund two pretensions. So there's a method in all that matters. And remember that these people were elected by you to represent you. And you know, and as frustrated as you get with them, understand that they still have and continue to should have the best interest of the district at heart. And so some of the things we do aren't fun, just like when I put that recommendation out, I didn't have to do that. I'm retiring. I could have just given whatever, went, just walked away. Didn't have to go through all this. I went through all this so that everybody got to hear the same story, and so that everybody knows the situation is one that needs, everyone needs to be corrected. It's going to be tight. Didn't run from that, because it's the truth. And I've tried always to give you that. I, when I met with them, I, I tried to answer the questions. And so I think you've got that in the next gentleman that will follow me, and you certainly have that in the board members. And you elected Mr. Hubbard and Mr. Bullock to be on it, pardon me not, say Geebo, Mr. Bullock to be on the board. And so you feel like you've got the representation voice, but be open with it and ask questions before you just come to a problem. This district will do well. There are a lot of good people here, and yes, we have good teachers. And you're right, we've had declining enrollment, people leave here, but people make their own decisions to leave for a lot of factors. It doesn't make North County a bad place. We had a ninety-nine point six score on our APR. We flew everybody in this county out of the water. That's due to your teachers. So if you look at it as it is, we're getting a lot of bang for our buck, because we're going to have a lot of bucks.
But we're top heavy on your end.
Not anymore than you ever made. I'm, I'm on the index based off the teacher salary.
Before we blast administrator's salary, though, consider that it's supply and demand. Demand earns a salary based on what he's bound to be at across the state.
But he's just top bow about declining enrollment for eight years. Justify that.
Board members report. Uh, our new superintendent, Dr. Levy's here today. Dr. Levy, good to stand, making everybody, do your stuff for everybody. Randy, a motion to, to move into closed session. All vote?